I now call the meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. At this time, please turn off your cell phones. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. President?
Here.
Here.
Mr. President?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here.
Mr. President?
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 President. Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. President?
Yes.
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 Please stand with me and pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First sort of business is public acknowledgements and commendations. Cranston Police Department. Councilman, Council Vice President, Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, probably everybody already knows that Christmas, actually the week before Christmas and Christmas night, Amen and Blue went into some burning buildings and saved some people from horrific circumstances. So at this time, I would like to acknowledge, I think in most of the offices are here now, but Councilman Aketos will be handing out citations to all of you, and I'll read out the names. First, we have the house fire on 59 Standish Avenue on Christmas night. This is in recognition and appreciation of their bravery and quick response to a house fire on 59 Standish Avenue on December 25th, 2015, and the safe rescue and evacuation of the victims of the multifamily house fire and occupants of neighboring homes. First is Officer Boston Smith. Officer Michael Wong. And also on the 72 Princess Avenue fire, in recognition and appreciation of their bravery and quick response to a house fire at 72 Princess Avenue on December 18th, 2015, and the safe rescue and evacuation of the victims of the multifamily house fire and occupants of the neighboring homes. Sergeant Justin Ruckowitz. Is that good? I should have practiced that before, like, it came up. Officer Brenda Saroyes. And last but not least, Officer Ross Manzadi. Ladies and gentlemen, the definition of heroes is standing right in front of you. Congratulations to all. We are very, very, very proud of you all.
Officers, thank you very much. Job well done.
Council President, if I may continue?
Yes.
We have three community service recognition awards to three people who are known by a lot of people in Cranston for their establishment on Atwood Avenue. I'll save my remarks on this to last, but Councilman Farina and Councilman Papalosis, you're gonna wanna hand these out while I read the names? How do you wanna do this? Well, they'll have the same wording, but I'll just read it. "In recognition and appreciation of their selfless and tireless commitment to community service on behalf of the city of Cranston, the entire city council on behalf of the residents of the city wishes to extend their thanks and express their hope and best wishes for their continued good health and good fortune in all their future endeavors." First person is Mr. Edward Brady. As you all know, yeah, this is field. As you all know, they own the Thirsty Beaver on Atwood Avenue, but that's not why they're here. They have, they donate to pretty much every charity that I know of. They're always having something there for somebody else. They are a pay it forward business. They, I've been honored to be part of their, was it Holidays for the Homeless? Hope for the Homeless Food Kitchen that we do every year. These two gentlemen grew up here, graduated from Cranston West and stayed in the city and have a successful business in Cranston, one in Smithfield and another one in Providence. So their hope that our children are gonna stay here when they graduate and do business and keep their money here in Rhode Island. So I thank you for all you do, for the city you guys pay it forward. Councilman Papalosis.
Thank you, Mr. Council Vice President. You know, I travel all across the state for work and seeing various people. Whenever I tell people I'm from Cranston, they say, "Do you know Ed Brady? Do you know Justin Erickson? They did this for this charity or feeding the homeless or Toys for Tots or Cranston West Alumni Association." They're involved with anything and everything and pretty much the people I talk to that come up to them and ask for help, these guys help them. So if we can recognize them tonight for what they've done, good sons of Cranston and keep up the good work, guys. Thank you.
Council President, that's all on public acknowledgements.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Moving on to public hearings. If anybody in the public would like to speak on any docketed item, please come forward, give your name and address to the record.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. Call the letter representing the firefighters. I just wanna congratulate the police officers that got awarded tonight. As someone who sees them every day, working on a firsthand basis, you know you've got a great police department when you do. I wanna talk about our contract that's before you tonight. First, I wanna thank the Finance Committee for recommendation or passage, and thank you for the kind words when you made that passage. What I'd like to address is an error that's out there in the public. There was an article in today's Journal on the pension deal, on the contract, and the sub-headline was tentative act also calls for COLAs in the future. That's not true, and you know that. That's why you approved it, because I'm sure if that was true, you wouldn't have approved it. I spoke with the reporter at length on a Friday. That was his first question, if there are any pension changes to this, this contract. I explained to him there wasn't. I thought I made it pretty clear. If he didn't believe me, all he had to do was go on the city's website. Our present contract is on the city's website on the personnel, and all he had to do was go to section 24 of pensions in the contract number three, and he will see that the 3% COLA is there, which has been there since 1995. I'm hoping, because this was a, the sub-headline in today's paper, that a COLA came in with this deal, my hope is that the Journal will run a retraction tomorrow in this story, that there are absolutely no pension benefits that are part of this negotiated deal. Zero. So let me explain why there's some pension language in the tentative agreement. The only reason there are pension, there's pension language because the agreement that we made a year and a half ago with the mayor that was ratified by this council to shore up our city pension was concessions. That's all we gave back. We took out our open-ended escalator, we gave that back forever. We took a COLA for 10 years, suspended every other year, and in year 11 and year 12, we go from 3% to 1 and 1/2%, to 1 and 1/2%. We had to put that in the collective bargaining agreement to protect the city, and that's why it's in there before you. Because if we didn't do that, and those changes were just by court order, then someone could retire in five or six years and say, "This is the contract I'm retiring under, and there's no mention of a reduction of my COLA in there." And we could have a court case before us. So that language was put in this tentative agreement to protect the city. And there's also a protection in there for the firefighters, because the only thing we got out of that deal was that the city would have to fund our pension to what the actuaries said they have to. And that's, that's the only thing we got out of it. But most of it was all, all of it was concessionary. So I wanted to clear that up, and I'm hoping there will be a retraction in the Journal tomorrow, because it's not fair to the mayor to think that he negotiated a COLA in this tentative agreement. It's not fair to you, who hopefully will support it, and it's not fair to us. And if the reporter wants to speak with me again, I'm here to speak, but he doesn't have to. All he has to go do is check the contract since 1995, and he will, he will see that there was, there's been a 3% COLA in our contract since then. So I appreciate anybody that's, if you can support this for us tonight. It's nice to be under a contract. It's nice to have labor peace. We see what's going on in Providence. There's no need in spending that kind of money. We believe this is a fair deal for the firefighters and the city of Cranston. I'll answer any questions that anybody has. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public that could speak on any docketed item? Please come forward, give your name and address to the record, please.
Richard Tomlin's 400 Farmington Avenue. First, let me say how much I appreciate the awards that these policemen received. What you're doing here, this meeting, and what you did in a previous meeting is what I've been saying about the policemen for a long, long time. They're on the firing line, everybody, any one of them that's out in a patrol car, anything can happen at any one time. They are the individuals that protect this city night and day. Some of the adverse criticism you get is, well, they give out tickets. Well, that's their job. That's, firemen don't give out tickets. So that's part of the negativity that you hear around town, but I think what you did tonight, what you've been doing, and what the new chief has been doing, is gonna do a lot to turn that around. We all know nationally the beating up that policemen have been taking. There's people out there that are really going after the policemen, forgetting what they do every day in protecting all of us. On the contract, what I'd like to know is, tonight, what that contract cost the city? Today, tomorrow, and the next day, for the next three or four years? I see nothing so far, and you haven't had any questions tonight. Now, maybe in your meetings amongst yourselves, you did, but my understanding is, and the feeling I get, this is a theta complete. It's an election year. So who's gonna speak out about it? Who's gonna ask the questions that I ask? What does this, or any contract, or any contract really costs the city? We know that we've got so many suits, and we've had so many, so much money for Matt Tenutio and the rest of them, that's costing this city multi-million dollars. What's gonna happen when the new budget comes about? And you know that the school committee is meeting tonight, and they're probably gonna approve a budget of $151.4 million. That's $4 to $5 million over last year, and the understanding I have, they're gonna ask you for that money. So you have an awful lot to contend with and to take one thing and just pass it through, as I see it. As I see it. If you've got any objections to it, or you wanna tell the public how you went through the process of approving this, then that's your job. It's not only your job, it's your sworn duty. So you have to take this contract, any contract, into consideration and find out what it's gonna do for year one, two, three, and four, rather than just going from election to election. And it's the worst this time of the year, because your people are in election year. Since he's already announced and he's campaigning, you don't see Mr. Seaky here talking about it, do you? He doesn't dare. He doesn't dare. So who's gonna talk about this and the finances in general for the city? That's your job, and I'll close up by saying, let me hear tonight. You have somebody that you have an auditor. We pay an auditor. I'd like to hear his review of that contract and to tell us what it's gonna cost the city in the next fiscal year coming, and then the two or three fiscal years after that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that'd like to speak on any docketed item? If not, the public speaking section is now closed. Resolutions. First, we have a resolution urging the Rhode Island General Assembly to exclude the city of Cranston as a site location for toll gantries sponsored by Councilman Papalakis, Vivekio, Botts, and Farina. Under discussion, is there a motion?
We need a motion first.
Motion approved. Second.
Under discussion. Councilman Papalakis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I put this resolution in with the help of my co-sponsors, because I'm concerned about Cranston 295 being a site for toll gantries. I'm concerned that trucks are going to avoid the toll gantry by getting off Route 37 on the Phoenix Avenue, going through secondary roads through school zones, and on secondary city roads, and add more wear and tear to those. I'm also concerned about new businesses that might look at Cranston as a future home and be concerned about a toll gantry off of their exit where they might put a business. I know this council works very hard to make sure we have a pro-business atmosphere, and I'm concerned that a toll gantry in the city would hurt it. That's why I put this resolution in. Thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria, you hand up.
Oh, yeah, okay. I have a couple of questions on this. Again, we're asking the General Assembly to, I don't know if some of the people in here are gonna run for the General Assembly, but we're getting, we're sticking our nose into General Assembly work again. I'm not comfortable voting for this until I have either a traffic study and/or a fiscal impact study. And since there is no plan, they're still talking about it, there is no plan before even the state yet on this. So I have my reservations about voting for this tonight, and I would remind the council that immediate consideration requires unanimous vote. If one of us asks to put it into committee, it automatically goes into committee by Robert's rules. I like the intent of it, but I would just assume, see what, is a fiscal impact or a traffic study impact, which both are not with this resolution. So I would move to put it into committee.
All right, second.
Councilman Sieda, you hand up.
On the subject of the resolution, was it put on the docket properly, or was it put it on, put on so? We need to vote for immediate consideration on it. Can we get a ruling from our attorney? I don't...
It's on the docket in the standard form under resolutions early in the calendar, so it doesn't necessarily require immediate consideration. Council Rule 5 allows the president to assign it to a committee if that's his pleasure, and also Rule 34B requires that if there's a fiscal impact, that it be sent to committee.
There you go. So on those, Council President?
Yes, Council.
On those two, I would recommend we put it into committee. Can I have a second?
I second it, Farina.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to put it to a...
Point of order. We already have a motion on the floor.
There was a motion previously on the floor. How can it, does this motion supersede, because it's a motion to send it to committee? That's the attorney for the council.
Yeah, we're still in the discussion on the first motion.
Okay.
So, well, they're trying to move the question, the second motion.
Question.
All right, we'll continue the discussion on the first motion.
Thank you.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. My three years, I guess three years, on the council, we've always had resolutions involved with General Assembly business, whether it's, I think what it does is it gives them the feeling of what the council has on certain matters. It's not going into the nuts and bolts of ordinances or statutes or whatever. And I think this allows us to portray our philosophy and what we believe is good for the state as far as tolling goes. I mean, you're either for or against it. And I'm not, my view on tolling is not just limited to the gantry that would go up in Cranston. I think it's on a statewide level. And I've seen figures today where Rhode Island spends $28,508 per mile on highways, highway spending. And Massachusetts is a far second for $21,371. Connecticut's third, $19,000. And Vermont spends $11,000 per mile on highway, on highways. So I think before we implement tolling, we could take a look at why Rhode Island spends $28,000 a year or per mile in annual spending on a highway, when other states can do it for a quarter, a half, or three-quarters of what we spend. I think we need to take a look at that prior to implementing, implementing tolling. Thank you.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. You know, my concerns, I share some of Councilman Papalosis' similar concerns. I have additional concerns when I look at tolling in the state. You know, I feel tolling is an additional tax. I've seen several sets of numbers come out from the governor's office and from different studies that say we'll get anywhere from 30 to 60 million for the tolls. And realistically, based on that kind of math, we're still 30 million short from what we need to fix the bridges. And I haven't seen any kind of economical impact on the city of Cranston or any other city in town for that matter. And until I see impact on my city, the people that elected me are gonna say no tolls. So like Councilman Botts said, either you're for tolls or you're against tolls. And I've been on the council for three years. I've never seen us send a resolution to committee because it lacked a fiscal note. These are resolutions, it's the will of the council. In my years in the council, we've never attached a fiscal note. We've sent things to the General Assembly and saying, "This is the will of the Cranston City Council." So I think we should either, if you're for it, pass it. If you're against it, say no. I appreciate the time, and I hope my colleagues will support it.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Okay, but I will remind Councilman Farina, we do have that option. We can put it to committee if it needs, and both, this is gonna have a fiscal and a traffic impact on our city, whether or not you wanna look at it. But we don't, they don't have, they just guessed on these sites. We don't know for sure if we're gonna have Cranston as a site. I mean, I think this should be vetted in committee. Again, you know, I'm a big committee fan, but this is, this is a General Assembly debate. This is General Assembly work. We're sticking our nose, again, to the General Assembly. A resolution is just a piece of paper. Let them do their work. They get paid more than we do anyway. Let them, let them, let them do what they're elected to do. We're not the General Assembly, we're the city council. Thank you.
Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. I think Barrowville gets paid more than we do, but that's beside the point. Couple of things. See, this is just more taxation, and I guess it's a philosophy Councilman Botts alluded to, Councilman Farina, are you for more taxation or not? Rhode Island is the ninth worst state for taxation, which means we're 41st out of 50 in, out of 50 states. And yet Cranston is the 41st best city to live in in America amongst hundreds of cities of equal or greater size. So it's kind of a strange analogy there, because we're, you know, we're ranked so poorly as far as the amount of taxes burdened that we create for our citizens. I believe Naru Gansit came out against it. It was the first city that actually just passed a resolution on that against the tolling. The Truckers Association today came out against it. And there was some concern about some language, I guess, from, from the State House or from the governor's office about the state police enforcing these rules for these gantries if truckers tried to circumvent the roads and go around the tolling. Is that, is that how we're gonna attract business to Rhode Island? By having the state police waste their resources to make sure that trucks don't go around tolling booths or tolling gantries? I think it's the concept itself of more taxation, which is a deterrent to businesses. And I think it could have a severe fiscal impact. I don't think it's our job to, to study the fiscal impact of it. I think we can come up with a philosophy as to whether we are for or against it and let the General Assembly do their thing. I just hope that we can send at least a small message that we don't want tolling, because we have, we have a lot of industry that's growing in Cranston, and the trucks have to deliver product to these facilities. We've got cadence over on Plainfield Pike. We've got some, some new tax incentive programs for industrial development, which is certainly gonna bring trucking into the state and require trucks to take products out of this state. That's the last thing we need, now that we're, we're the ninth worst, is to make us even worse. So I don't think, I don't think we need to send it to committee. It seems like every time there's a, something that has a little bit of a political impact, we don't wanna send it to the General Assembly, because we may have friends up there. We're not here to make friends. We're trying to just make a statement about what we believe in as a city.
Councilman Aketos.
Thank you, Council President. I have several items I'd like to address. First, through the chair, to the administration. Does the mayor support this resolution? Does the mayor have a position on this resolution?
Councilman, I believe the mayor has individually stated that he does not support the idea of putting tolls up in Rhode Island, but the administration doesn't take a position on council resolutions. That's council business.
Okay, thank you. My position, I think the idea of truck tolls is still in the process at the General Assembly. I think they're working on a number of options. We really don't know what their plan is yet. I think it's a bit premature that the city council vote on this resolution tonight. I think the prudent thing is it should go to committee, where it would be discussed in a number of ways, you know? We need to analyze, we need to dissect it. To pass it tonight or not pass it tonight, I think it's very premature. Also, we don't know if those communities that have gantries will be entitled to more revenue sharing. We don't know if we're gonna gain pirate money at this point. We don't know. So we may be causing Cranston not to be entitled to additional revenue. So that's, that's an option, and we need to discuss this and find out the direction that the General Assembly is going in before we pass anything we may be sorry for. So according, because I believe it's a bit premature, I'm not gonna be supporting this resolution tonight.
Councilman Sieda.
Motion to move the question.
I'll second that.
All right, motion to move the question is second. It's not debatable. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Wait, wait. What motion, what motion are we moving?
To move the question.
Move which question? Move which question? We have two.
The resolution. There's one, there's one motion on the table.
Do we roll out the motion?
All right, so the... Hang on. On the original motion to approve or deny?
There is one motion.
There's only one motion on the table at this time. We're in the discussion on the original motion. You made a motion to move the question. There's a second. It's not debatable. We take a vote on this.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
I thought this was to move the question.
Oh, to move the question, no.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. I thought you did.
No. Motion passes?
Motion fails.
Fails, all right. Motion fails. Continue.
Five to four.
All right, continue the discussion. Councilman Bott.
Thank you, Council President. If there is pilot money involved for Cranston coming out of this, I would be even more opposed to this concept of tolling because this is supposed to be explicitly for fixing roads and bridges in this state on state highways and state-owned highways. And I would be even more opposed to it if it's going to be floating money towards the cities and towns. That's ridiculous. That's number one. Number two, when these gantries, if they do go up, you think it's going to be limited to trucks. You got another thing coming. The next crisis that hits this state where this revenue-hungry General Assembly needs more money, you can be sure it's going to be taken from cars.
We stay on the subject.
I think I am on the subject.
No, you're not.
I am. And most importantly, that this council should vote this up or down right now because this is a philosophical question. This has nothing to do with what share the city's going to get or how this is going to be done. This is whether you're in favor of a tolling gantry in Cranston or not, and whether it affects the businesses in the city or not. And I am adamantly opposed to this, and I'll be voting in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
All right, I'm the only one that's spoken, and I'm going to speak. If we eliminate a gantry, if there ever is a gantry near Plainfield Pike, and there are ganries further down in the Providence area, every truck will be using Cranston as a bypass, whether it's 37 or Plainfield Pike. This resolution is going to hurt us more than it's going to help us, if that's the case. The last thing I want to see is a convoy of trucks coming down Plainfield Pike to avoid a gantry further down towards the Providence area. As far as money that we're going to get from pilot money, we get it at the institutions and we thank them for it. So I'm not against pilot money. Anything that can help this city revenue-wise, I'm not against. Thirdly, and most importantly, this is a concept, it's not even a bill before the General Assembly. You're overreacting to a point that you're trying to make political points with the public for yourselves. Do it in a diligent, orderly way. Let's go through the motions, put it in committee, find out what the real impact for this city is going to be. That's what we're here for, to protect the taxpayers. See what the real impact's going to be. See how much it's going to cost us as taxpayers. See if it's going to cost us anything as taxpayers. We have no idea. You're jumping the gun and you're just reacting to a John DePietro or Dan York or some other radio talk show host. You're not doing your job as council people. That's my personal opinion. And I've been here for 14 years, not three, 14. Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. I respect Councilman Bott's comments and I respect the minority's comments, which makes me more inclined to say that we need a fiscal impact note and we need a traffic study. Because they kept talking about money and fiscal and traffic impact. Anything that has anything to do with money, we don't know. I agree with you, we don't know what's going to happen. But let's wait to see what fiscal impact is. There may be none, there may be an adverse fiscal impact on us. So I can't see what the problem is. I'm doing what we've done before, put it in for fiscal impact study and for a traffic study. We do traffic studies on side streets in Cranston. This is going to be way more important than that. So I would, I would ask my colleagues to support my resolution to put in for fiscal impact. If you want to vote up or down, I'll be voting no because I want it to go for fiscal impact and that's my vote. So thank you.
Councilman Psychos.
First question, are we, are we, when we vote the next time, are we going to vote on the motion to send it to committee?
No, the whole resolution. The original resolution.
We're voting on the...
We're voting on the motion.
On the resolution.
On the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I, I think this statement that either you're for tolls or you're against them is just missing the whole point. The tollman sat down and said, "Oh, you know, what does Rhode Island need? Let me see, should we have a water park or a biomed engineering facility or tolls?" That's not the question. The question is, we have roads that need to be fixed. The Highway Trust Fund is going bust. How do we best finance road repair? That's the question. Now, some people obviously think it's with tolls, but I, you know, I try to read this and I don't really know what it is, what is the best way? Whether it's tolls, whether it's a higher gas tax, you know, maybe you can find some savings. We did have the big audit, I think that was a Republican idea, that, you know, he was supposed to straighten everything out with the big audit, save all this money. That, of course, never happened. But the, the, that's the issue to me, is how do we fix the roads in the most cost-efficient and fairest way? And I don't have the answer to that. So I won't be voting for this resolution. I think sending it to committee, I agree with Council President Lanny, there isn't even a specific proposal yet, and I haven't been able to unscramble whether a higher diesel gas tax is a better idea or, or what. So that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I look at this as I am doing my job. I've received lots of phone calls, lots of concern about this issue. I've heard from constituents on radio, television, read in the papers, statements they've made. You know, I look at it when people tell me who've elected me that, well, I've been sitting here for three minutes, three years, or 37 years, when they've elected me and they say, "We don't want tolls. We don't want tolls in Cranston." Councilman Farina, support no tolls. And I personally don't believe new taxes are the way to solve for revenue issues. You analyze spending and you try to cut it where you can. You look at hires, you look at heads, you look at whatever you can do to cut expenses. You don't just add a tax and make it go away. I would love to see more plans come from the State House. I would love to see different ideas go from the State House, but what I can tell you is that I am against tolling and I will be supporting this resolution.
All right, everybody's spoken on this at least twice, maybe three times. Can we kind of end the discussion with Councilman Vivek?
Very quickly, Council President. I think the, I think the real, the crux of the issue is, is should we pay as you go, which was the Republican legislators that proposed that type of a program versus tax and spend? And that's basically the philosophical issue. Do we borrow money? Do we... And we're going to have estimates on, on tolls. We don't even know what the impact is going to be. I don't know how they're going to determine it. And I think we just, by making a statement now, I don't know if we're going to have time. If it goes to committee, it's kicked over a couple of months, it may be all over in the legislature. So I think it's, and it's really, we're not trying to tell them what to do. They can still do it if they want to, but we're just making it known that we don't like taxes.
Can I end this conversation with one simple statement? I hope every one of you called your state representatives to tell them you're against tolls. And that's a hope. All right, take the hold of this. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Frey?
Yes.
Councilman Styros?
No.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Barr?
No.
Councilman Seo?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Move on. Measure, the resolution fails. We move on to report of committees. Safety Services and License Committee Chairman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Safety Services and License Committee meeting met on 12/15/01. Ordinance and Amendment of Title 512 of the Corps of City of Cranston 2005 titled Alcohol Beverage Licenses, Alcohol Server Trainer Certification, sponsored by the whole committee. It was unanimous, yes, this basically will allow us to control alcohol server training in our city. Evidently, the General Assembly passed a bill that would have just left it up to each city and town. I'd like to thank the clerk, Maria Wall. She brought it up and drafted the ordinance for us so we can have control over Class A licenses. So I would urge my committee to support this.
Motion to approve?
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Asido.
Yes, if Councilman Santa Maria doesn't mind, I'd like to be added as co-sponsor.
Absolutely. I would hope everyone sponsors it with me.
All right. Councilman Psychos.
Not on that committee. Could you say that again? If the, if the city, if the state allows cities to...
Can I defer, ma'am clerk, can I defer to you? The General Assembly passed, can you help me on this? I know you, she, she worked her foot on this one, so I want to give her credit for it.
It has to do with alcohol server training requirements. Previously, all liquor license holders, including Class A retail, were required. It was last year or the year before, I'm not sure when, the General Assembly amended that bill eliminating the requirement for Class A retail sales. So this puts it back in our local ordinance of the liquor store employees who are serving the public are required to have the alcohol server training.
So it did, it covers just that group?
It adds back the retail, yes.
The liquor stores?
Yes, the retail stores.
Council President, may I? Yes, go ahead. To you, to Councilman Psychos, it's, Steve, it's sort of like the tips program that we require of our liquor establishment. It's a control aspect. We didn't want to lose that control aspect, so the committee felt that it was a good idea to get it back. So again, I would urge passage.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Frey? Councilman Styros?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman Barr?
Yes.
Councilman Seo?
Yes.
Councilman Carr?
Yes.
Councilman Seo?
Yes.
Councilman Seo?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Ordinance Committee Chairman Akero.
Thank you, Council President Lanny. His first item for the ordinance committee is 8-15-02, Ordinance and Amendment of Title 10 of the Corps of City of Cranston 2005, Title Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Handicap and Sable Parking Space Permits, filed instead by Councilman Psychos, it's the passed committee.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I'll second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
I have a question, Council President.
Yes.
Through the chair to the administration, was there a traffic report or a traffic study
Mr. President, there was a traffic report that was distributed to members of the committee several weeks ago. There was a great deal of discussion at the last ordinance committee meeting about it. There were concerns raised about the, about certain ADA requirements regarding the width of streets and the parking spaces. Apparently, there's conflicting information whether or not the city is strictly required to adhere to those ADA requirements. It is a concern. It's a concern of the administration, but the committee did go ahead and recommend passage, I believe by unanimous vote.
And was, and was there any fiscal impact as well or no?
There was. To the best of my knowledge, there was no fiscal note attached to the ordinance.
Then may I ask, through the chair to the sponsor, what do you see as the cost of this?
Pretty minimal, just a pole and a sign where the building inspector approves a space. We have, we can make our own signs of that nature.
And you don't see any problem with people, other people that live in those houses using those handicap spaces?
Well, the, that, in a little bit of a different way, that problem was raised in committee by Councilman Asido and Councilman Santa Maria. And they, their concern was, say you had a three-decker, one space out front, and there were three handicapped people, kind of who gets the spot? So I do have an amendment to offer that gives the building inspector some flexibility in that, that case. I could offer that. I might as well offer it now. Maybe other people could. I just haven't figured out where to put it. I've got the sentence, but I haven't...
Okay. Should we hear your amendment?
He's not done with it yet.
Yeah, let me just find, I just need to find where to put it in the ordinance. Okay. The amendment would be to, on line 67.
67?
Well, let's, you know, everything's one sentence. Let's make it line 68. It would be item 11 on line, it would be, this would be the entirety of item 11, and it would state, "In individual cases, the building inspector may recommend to the city council that two-hour parking or loading zone parking be established to accommodate
Second.
Council President.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Under discussion, Councilman Asido.
So Councilman Psychos, so basically, since we have about 3,000 signs of our own, as was testified in previous meetings at the DPW, we can make that sign, say, loading zone or handicap loading zone or whatnot. So they wouldn't specifically have to park there, but if they had to pick up a handicapped person or unload a handicapped person, they'd be able to park in that spot and then get the person inside their home and then basically leave the spot open again? So if there were other people...
Yeah, the, the reason that I wrote it that way is that the, this ordinance that passes gives the building inspector the right to make the determination of whether there should be a handicapped parking designated spot on the street.
Loading or pickup only?
Well, no, just handicapped spot. But the power to make a two-hour parking or a loading zone, that's a city council power. So I wrote this, that the building inspector would have to come to us. He could say, okay, designated handicap parking. Or he could say, you know, this one's a little messy because of the people who live here or the way the street's made up. So my recommendation to the city council is two-hour parking or loading zone. And then, then we would use our usual power to adopt or reject that proposal. And then, then we would use our usual power to adopt or reject that proposal.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. I do like the idea of this ordinance, and I did support it in committee, and I'm going to support it tonight. The only concern I have, I made in committee, was regarding the placement of the spots, you know, the building inspector will decide where to put it on the block. It might not be in the best location for the handicapped person. It could potentially be, you know, seven, eight houses away. I do like it to test to see if it works. I would love to see a handicapped parking permit, something that we could give out that they could park anywhere on the street, that we would allow parking, so we would then designate areas that were basically streets that were handicapped, parking allowed. And if you had that permit, you could park on that street in front of your own home. You wouldn't have to look for a spot. But I think this is a good test to see if it works. I think if we have some complaints that people can't get spots in front of their homes or within a close enough proximity to their home, we may want to reconsider and look at making whole streets handicap accessible for handicap accessible parking. But I think as a first guess, this, this may work. So, thank you.
Councilman Stikos.
Yeah, I'd like to withdraw my amendment. Mr. Quinlan is just telling me that if the, if the amendment passes, then it has to be reposted and go back to committee. So what I would like to do is withdraw that amendment because it is kind of a, not central to the issue, and hopefully get this passed tonight, and I will sponsor this as soon as possible as an amendment to, to what passes. But so as not to tie it up this evening, I'll withdraw the amendment.
Councilman Papalakis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I like this ordinance, and I too will be supporting it tonight. My only question to the sponsor is, is there an appeal process if the building inspector denies the location? Is there a way for someone to work through it and maybe get it done if, if there's, you know, possibility?
There, there is not a appeal, there is not an appeal process in the ordinance. I think as a practical matter, if somebody gets refused, they're going to call us and, and that, as Councilman Farina just said, I think that's, that'll probably be a good thing, that we can see if it's working or it's not working, and deal with the appeal there. But I think we would certainly have the power separately to somehow establish one or amend the ordinance so that there could be one place.
Thank you.
Councilman Aketel.
Thank you, Council President. I will be supporting this amendment. I think it's a good idea. Kudos to Councilman Stikos. Need to do more for the handicapped individuals in the city, so it's a good piece of legislation. Thank you.
Councilman Recio.
Just one quick question through the chair to Mr. Quinlan. Is there any language in this that protects us in case some provision might violate ADA?
There's nothing specific in the amendment. It would, if the ADA or the federal government sought to enforce the ADA, that would really be a question, a federal primacy would be a federal jurisdictional question. So even if you put something in there saying, notwithstanding a finding on the ADA, ultimately, if, you know, ADA is enforced by the Justice Department, if they come in and say that the ordinance violates the ADA, normally it would just be giving an opportunity to repeal it if necessary, but I don't see that it would be a fine case.
Okay, yeah. My question was more, do we need something to qualify if this is, you know, nothing, it should be construed to violate the Americans with Disabilities Act? Any provision would be null and void if, if it's so, so provided?
I, I think it's a pretty clear question if the, if justice takes it, Councilman, that they would basically send a letter and assert primacy. And I don't know that you could survive it, it could survive even with a, such a clause. I don't consider it to be necessary as a legislative drafting principle.
Thank you.
I have one question for the administration. During the debate in committee on this, I asked if any, the City of Providence has handicap parking on streets throughout the city. And I asked the administration at that time if they had contacted Providence to see how they did it. And the answer was no. And I asked them to please contact Providence and see how they did their handicap parking and how they can do it. And theoretically, we couldn't do it because of regulations. Anybody of the administration know if they've contacted the City of Providence to see why it's good there and not good here?
Mr. President, my understanding is that many of the handicap parking spaces on the streets in the City of Providence were put into place years ago. I don't have any more specific information from that, and I will check in with our traffic department. But that's preliminary conversation I did have with him on that topic.
Check with the traffic department, give them, give them my regards.
I will.
Councilman Asito.
Yes, can I ask the director with whom he had the conversation with in Providence?
I didn't have that conversation personally, but I was speaking to our traffic person. So I'll have to, I'll have to check in with him.
Has added either.
I'll have to check in with him.
So you don't, so as of now, he hasn't?
I don't know. I don't know. This is a preliminary conversation I had with him. I don't know what follow-up he's done since then.
Wasn't it pretty clear in committee that the Council President wanted that answered tonight?
It certainly was. And I did, as I said, I had a conversation with him after that. I don't know what additional follow-up he's done, but I will find out and report back to the council.
It always seems to take two months to get an answer. But anyways, we'll continue. Wait, so he's right. Councilman Aketel.
We need to, to vote on this, right? My hand was, we need to take a vote on this. My hand, my hand wasn't up.
Oh, okay. Councilman Santa Maria, you got it?
Thank you, Council President. Could I ask the sponsor one more question? Since you had to pull the amendment, what's going to happen with that scenario where I gave you about the three-tenant house with three handicapped people?
We're going to tell them an amendment's on the way.
Okay, so we're going to amend it? We're going to be commended, or we're going to pass this and...
No, we're going to, I'll submit this, and then it'll be like a whole new ordinance, just this one, adding this one sentence. So it would go on the, we'd, we'd hear it in March.
Thank you, Council President.
No further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Motion passes in am.
Thank you. Next item is resolution for temporary seasonal speed bumps on Laurel Hill Avenue from Ogden to Oxford Street. I sponsored this, this, I sponsored a study. We outcry for residents on Laurel Hill with a petition. This move it, let it move passage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Aketel.
This is, doesn't mandate speed bumps. This only requesting administration to do a study and see the feasibility of seasonal speed bumps there. So it puts it in the hands of the administration to do some type of report on, on speeding on Laurel Hill Avenue.
Okay, Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President, to the sponsor. Did you check with police and fire on, on, on their feelings on this?
No, I have not.
I would feel, I would feel, we have a more comfort zone if you checked with them because this may slow them down. I don't want them being slowed down. I want the speeders being slowed down, so...
But that's, you're absolutely right, Councilman. But that should have, question should have been asked in committee. This did go to ordinance committee.
On the ordinance committee.
We had that opportunity, we had that opportunity. As I said, this doesn't mandate anything. If the administration has this bill, I'm sure there'll be a input from fire and police. And if we get the report back that the administration see because of their input that it's not feasible, it's fine.
May I ask that question of the administration, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Before any of this is implemented, would the administration get the opinion of police and fire on if this would be a hindrance to them?
Police, fire, public works, yes. Every department will be asked to weigh in on it if the resolution is passed.
Please give me a word that that'll be asked, because, you know, I don't want, if there's a fire in, in your neighborhood and they're slowed down because of the speed bump, because it's in the summertime, might I guess, because it's not going to be up for the winter because of snow plows. So I'm just concerned about that. Other than that...
As long as the administration puts in a report that we have that, okay, thank you.
Once the resolution is passed.
Thank you.
Councilman Stikos. I'm sorry, Bots.
Good say. Thank you, Council President. Get longer arms next time. I just don't know what consti, I mean, I know this is asking for further study on this, but I don't know what constitutes a seasonal speed bump. Also, you know, there's no fiscal note, and we don't want to do anything without a fiscal note, it seems, with any of our resolutions. So...
I'll, I'll support you if you would ask for a fiscal note and a traffic study.
And my other concern is that there's speeding in the summer, and is this going to be a three-season speed bump where there's no one speeding in the winter? Is this a two-season? How does that work? I just don't understand where, how that works with seasonal speed bumps.
That question's directed to me, Council President. It's for the non-winter months, Councilman Bots, so because of the snow plowing, so it will be implemented in the spring and removed by late fall.
Thank you. My other concern would be if this happens at these locales, I'm sure that there are going to be other locations within the city that residents would ask for these speed bumps as well. And so, and I know in past dealings with the city, I know they're, they're usually opposed to having speed bumps implemented because of various reasons of cars making noises, they go over the speed bumps, cars revving engines when they're finished going over the speed bumps, so I'm not sure, I, I'm not going to be supporting this. Thank you.
If the council has an issue with this, I'd move to send it back to committee where there are questions given addressed at that point, Council President.
Concerned. Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. You know, realistically, I'm going to support Councilman Aketel on this because it's asking for a report. You know, over the years, as a councilman, people have asked me for speed bumps on their street, and usually my response to them is, "Speed bumps don't work because of X, Y, Z." I would love to see a simple report with some definitions from the individual committees because normally it's just from maybe the public works director, or maybe the deputy chief of the fire department. I would love to just see something where everyone weighs in and say why it doesn't work in the city. So when people continually ask me for speed bumps or dips, I can say, "Well, you know, we've done an analysis, we did the work, and this is why they don't work for you." So I, actually, I'm going to be supporting Councilman Aketel because in my view, if they're reading these, he's asking for a report on why they would be good or not good as opposed to putting them up because we can't put them up without any kind of analysis.
Councilman Stikos.
Just to briefly answer one of Councilman Bots's questions, their, their public works department does have some temporary speed bumps, and they were used on, over on Parkview Boulevard, not actually on Parkview Boulevard, but in that general area. Believe they, that was when Steve Laffey was mayor. So I also would be interested in hearing whether they worked or they, they didn't work, but it isn't going to be a, it shouldn't be a cost if, first of all, it's a report, so it won't be a cost to buy speed, speed bumps, but they do, as far as I last checked, they do exist.
Councilman Santa Maria.
I will, I will say in defense of Councilman Aketel, Laurel Hill Avenue is a definite speeding street. It's on our list of, our hot list in the Traffic Safety Commission. So it is a problem. It is a problem, and I don't want to take that lightly because they do fly, fly there both ways. I agree with Councilman Farina that this is just asking for a study, wrong. If Councilman Bots wants, I'll add an amendment to get a traffic study and a fiscal impact. He'll put on it if he wants it. That makes him feel better to stay consistent, but I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilman Recio.
Thank you, Council President. This isn't a form of a resolution, so it's actually less of a burden than, than an ordinance that's going to be going to committee and has to be vetted. So I'm not really, you know, although I'm a little skeptical about what their results are going to be, I certainly think it's worthy of a study. So it doesn't bother me that it's going to go, you know, in the form of a resolution. We'll get all the reports. I'm sure we'll get plenty of reports from different departments, and we'll see what, what transpires.
Councilman Bots.
Thank you, Council President. Well, the wisdom of this body has changed my mind on this, and I will be voting in favor of this resolution. I agree that maybe a study should be done and find out whether this is a feasible option or not. Thank you.
On that note, we're going to end the discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Before we go any further, I'd like to interrupt for a minute. It's getting late. We have Troop 66 here, the Boy Scouts, are here to get a citizen, citizenship, community merit badge, I believe. And I want to thank them for coming, and me am very patient. Please stand up so we can... Thank you very much for your patience. I know it's getting late, so maybe some of you want to go home. If you don't, if you do, we don't believe you. Councilman Aketel, continue.
Thank you, Council President. This is the last item, or is the committee, resolution for traffic safety report on Gladstone Street School vicinity. They've had a lot of issues there in the morning and when school lets out in the afternoon with traffic jams. So the vice principal, Mr. Plough, asked me to introduce this resolution, which will basically request the Traffic Safety Commission headed by Councilman Santa Maria to do an analysis of what's going on there.
Motion to approve. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Finance Committee Chairman Stikos.
The first item that was approved by the Finance Committee is the three-year proposed contract with the Firefighters Union.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve under discussion. Councilman Aketel.
Thank you, Council President. Just to clarify with the general public, this contract is negotiated by the mayor of the city and the representative, representatives of the Cranston Fire Department. The, the city council merely ratifies what, what was negotiated. We have very little input. However, I think it's a fair and just contract. I think it's prudent. And also, I think the mayor works well with the fire and police department when, unlike Mayor Providence that's at odds, so I just want to add that. But I'll be supporting this contract. Thank you.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I look at this contract, I've gone through it several times. I look at a six percent raise over three years, tantamount to a two percent raise each year. I went over this in committee, but that's lower than most corporations give out at this point. Most companies give anywhere from a two-two to a two-five percent raise annually. So I think a two percent raise is fair. Looking at the COLA situation that came out today, there are no COLAs in this contract. COLAs were voted on years ago. I think I was, oh, sixteen when they were put into the contract, so they've been there for a long time. I do know that we have worked hard as a council and the administration to create pension reform with our firefighters, and I appreciate them always coming to the table and really trying to help work it out to make sure everything we do works for the citizens of this city in a fair and equitable way. So I will be supporting this contract, and I urge my colleagues to do as well.
Councilman Stikos.
A question for the city solicitor, and also the same question for the council's lawyer, Mr. Quinlan. The section on the COLA pension payment, which is the, I think, the next to last item of amendment to the contract, could you give us your... of amendment to the contract, could you give us your version of what that means and why it's in the contract for the city solicitor?
So you're talking about the section 24.2 pension payment? Yeah, because that matches, that's the settlement, I think it's on, right? The 24.2, that man, that matches the settlement agreement that was come to at the state level. And that's just the continuation of the original agreement.
So why, if there, why is it in the contract?
Well, just to codify it going forward. It's not a new thing. It just continues what has already been agreed to, if it's not codified.
Well, Mr. Valetta said that, his opinion was that that was to protect the city, and you're just saying it's only to codify?
Correct.
What does it mean, what does it mean when it says, "The parties agree that the obligations set forth in said settlement agreement are incorporated herein as if more fully set forth, and the said obligations are thus contractual and not a mere recital"? What does that mean?
I'm going to defer, Councilman Stychos, I'm going to defer to the director because our attorney, William Dolan, negotiated this portion of it, so...
As Solicitor Rossen mentioned, our council, who represented the city in the lawsuit that came about as a result of the pension reform ordinance that was crafted by the mayor and approved by the city council, I believe in 2013, there was a lawsuit that followed. There was a settlement that came about. The language of the settlement was different from the language in the contract. The settlement, by the settlement, the city and the union agreed to certain concessions. Those concessions were reflected in the settlement agreement of that lawsuit, but the language of this contract had not been changed. This is the first new contract since that settlement. So by changing the language in this contract to match the language of that settlement, the city becomes protected from anyone coming along and saying, "Well, I don't care what that settlement says. This is my contract. I get what's in this contract." And the language of this contract would have potentially provided for a higher payment than the settlement agreement. So that's how the city gets protection, by updating this language to match the settlement agreement.
So, unlike Mr. Rossen, you agree with what, your opinion is the same as Mr. Valetta's? Is that correct? Mr. Coop?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said, I'm sorry, I thought you said Mr. Rossen. Yes, yes, I agree with Mr. Valetta that this language protects, primarily protects the city because it protects us from anyone coming along saying, "I should get higher benefits, higher pension benefits than are provided for in that settlement."
So what is, what is, what is, "And the said obligations are thus contractual and not a mere recital"? What does that mean?
That means that members are contractually bound to comply with the reduced benefit as set forth in the settlement agreement of that lawsuit. That's my understanding based on the conversation with our attorney, who represented the city in that lawsuit.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselman, I agree with that analysis, and I think, just to point out, I mean, it contractually binds the members of the union. It also contractually binds the city, but it does address another issue, which was when the, if the actives got a raise higher than 3%, or a 4% or 5% raise, the retirees under, as I understand it, under older contracts would be able to claim that rate. This locks into this percentage rate.
Okay, is there any, if, if there was another legal challenge, say, 20 years from now, to a 3% COLA, the city gets in a mess financially, and the city challenges the 3% COLA, they basically have a rerun of the same situation?
Ultimately, they would because it's a contractual challenge to the terms of what's now in this contract. I think the contract gives them a, gives both sides a better standing that this answers the question, and it would hearken back to the 3%.
Okay, thank you.
Counselman Favecchio.
Thank you too. Go a little bit further, maybe it's a help, Councilman Stychos. I think it's also the question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Solicitor or Mr. Quinlan, the statutory versus contractual issue, which was the issue at the state level. If there's a statutory provision, that can be changed by a legislative body, but a contractual issue usually will be upheld by the courts. So by doing this, it's protection for both sides, basically. It gives us protection against someone claiming in the future that they're not bound by the agreement that was reached, and it also protects the firemen's union so that some council down the road doesn't say, "Well, let's just make it zero." You know, that we're going to reduce it to zero. So I think that was the part of the issue, so, but I think that it's fair. I think it's in line with other contracts that we've supported over the last year. We did the teachers' contract, we've done a few others, 6% over three years on average. I don't think it's a substantial increase, and I think that, you know, the city and Mr. Valetta did a good shot. I think that he, we certainly don't want to see what's happening in Providence because they're gambling with complete failure. If the arbitra, we don't, we wouldn't want arbitration in that situation, and certainly trying to reduce overtime by creating different shifts doesn't always work, as we see in Providence, and there's a delicate balance between overtime and adding more staff. If you balance it off, sometimes you can do better, having some overtime and not hiring a lot more people with all, with full benefits. So I think that the contract in general is a very good one.
Any other discussion? Uh, Councilman Stychos.
Uh, yes, I, I won't be supporting this contract, not so much for the provisions that are in the changes, but because of what it doesn't do, and it doesn't in any way address the huge overtime, amount of overtime that we spend every year in the fire department, $3 to $4 million. And that needs to be addressed, and I just don't, there's just no attempt to address it in this contract, and perhaps will be even made worse in this contract because of the agreement to reduce the number of required positions. I also mentioned in committee that I find 15 holidays too many, and if, if a person, if we agreed to an additional holiday for, say, city hall employees, we would basically pay people not to work for a day, but when we have 15 holidays in the fire department, we not only pay everybody to have a day off, which is what a holiday is, but we also make our, make a situation where we have to pay overtime to an entire shift that day because we want to still have fire protection. So that's just one example of how the overtime situation could be improved, but the contract doesn't do that. We spend more on fire overtime than we do on our public libraries, and it just, it needs to be addressed.
Counsel, Councilman Paplakis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I will be supporting this contract. I think it's a fair contract, and when, and we're all going over numbers tonight, I wanted to see how many runs Engine 3 and Ladder 3 do in our neighborhood. I know it butts up against Ward 3, you know, they run both ways, and in 2015, I think they did over 6,700 runs, which is 18 a day. So I think they do a good job of keeping the Ward 3, Ward 5 safe, and I appreciate all their hard work, and I will be supporting it.
Councilman Bots.
Thank you, Council President. I will be supporting this contract as well. I don't want to reiterate what everyone said, but, you know, this is, as Mr. Valetta said, labor peace. You see what's going on in Providence, and not only Providence, but Coventry, Lincoln, and other cities and towns in Rhode Island, whether it's trying to, you know, reduce the overtime unilaterally, or fire districts going bankrupt. Here we are with a contract that's fair to both sides, 6% over three years is fair, I think, to both the taxpayers and the firefighters, and again, they do a tremendous job in the city, and I'd be happy to support this contract. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? My position on this is, I've probably seen more contracts than anybody in this room I've been here longer. Mr. Valetta and the firefighters have always been fair. When the city was in trouble, they stepped forward, took cuts. Now they're asking for a fair contract. It's 2% a year, and they're going to, they're going to contribute to Delta Dental. It's a first. That's a new thing that we're getting off the firefighters. I understand about 15 holidays a year. I understand about overtime, but we didn't negotiate this contract, the mayor did. We're here to ratify it. We have to look at it to see if it's fair. I look at this contract, and I say it's fair, and I will support it also. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. No. Yes. 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 Okay, the next item that was considered by the Finance Committee is a tax incentive for JMDH Real Estate of Cranston. They're the, they are, they're the Restaurant Depot Real Estate owners.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Counsel, Councilman Santa Maria.
Just real quick, Council President, when this was vetted committee, the first words out of this company's mouth were 25, 25 new jobs? 25 new jobs. Again, the amount they're asking for in tax breaks is a lot less than 25 new jobs, even if you put it at minimum wage. So, to me, that's the magic word. We've had some problems in the past with tax incentives. Everyone worked together to make it have some teeth and get people back to work. So I'm going to be supporting this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Uh, Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. Put it simply, this is not a tax break, as Councilman Santa Maria put it, this is a tax reduction on the new building that they've added on to. So this doesn't really cost the city any money, it's just a phase in of the, of the value of what the new building is worth in the tax rolls. The fact that they've added 25 new jobs, brought actual people to the city because of the expansion, these types of individual locations can go anywhere. Restaurants usually purchase from them, and you have to have a restaurant to purchase from them. Restaurants will go to them, whether they're in Providence, Warwick, Johnston, Narragansett, Newport. The building itself is a destination. The fact that we're able to keep it here, have it expand, we now have more restaurants coming into the city, bringing their business to Cranston, buying their coffees at local Cranston shops. I think it's great. I commend the Director of Economic Development for bringing them in. I commend the administration for getting this done. It's a great, it's a great win for the city. Thank you.
Counselman Arquero.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be supporting this legislation. I think we need to show around that Cranston's pro-business. I want to thank the Economic Development Office and the mayor's administration. We're retaining a business there that employs 65 employees. They will be creating 25 new jobs. I think this is a win-win situation for the city. These individuals will be spending money here in Cranston, so kudos to the administration.
Counselman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to echo my colleagues thanking Mr. DeBoni and Ms. Lopresti for their, their work in developing these incentives, and to clarify, there's no money that goes out from the city. These are simply some forgiveness, phasing in of the taxes on the new, only the new construction or the new phases that these businesses bring in. So I think it's, it's another example of how we try to attract business. They will have some trucks going in and out, so we'll see how that goes, but I'm in favor of this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. No. Yes. 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 Next is a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Second.
Okay, under discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Next is a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Next is waiver of interest on overdue tax payments recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Last is denials of requests for waivers on interest.
Motion approved, the denials.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Next on the agenda is the Audit Committee report for the fiscal year ending 2015 fiscal audit by MACHAM. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, the audit.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Under discussion. Any discussion? Councilman Stychos.
This is, the audit was reviewed by the Audit Committee last week and recommended to the council that the audit be approved. I think there's going to be some, we're going to have a, at the Finance Committee, we're going to be talking about the management letter, which doesn't really need to be approved or accepted, but this is a, this is a vote on the audit, and I just, I'd like to ask Council Auditor Moretti to just go over what has happened procedurally since the council failed to approve the audit at the December meeting, and the discussions that were held with the Auditor General, and when, particularly when the audit was finally finished.
Okay, first off, state law requires that the city submits their audited financial statements to the Auditor General by December 31st, so that was the target. At the December 21st council meeting... 21st council meeting, as we know, the audit was not approved by the council. And it appeared that the dissenters' basis for not approving that motion, if you will, because at the time, the audit was not complete. And also, there was no guidance received from the Audit Committee because at the prior meeting, there was not a quorum. And therefore, there was no official discussion or recommendation for approval or disapproval or what have you from the Audit Committee. There were concerns about the draft management letter. Also, another key element was as part of the audit, the audited financials of the charter school are required. And those results are incorporated into the city numbers. So that without the charter school numbers, the city audit can't be, cannot be completed. And at that time, the audit was not complete, nor the numbers submitted to the auditors or to the Finance Office for incorporation into our financial statements. And also, one of the other contributing factors for the delay, and at that point in time, the audit wasn't ready because of there was a major change to a pension reporting accounting standard. The result was it was a one-off or unusual delay in this year's audit cycle and delaying the auditors' process of their own internal control procedures. Between December 21st, the council meeting, and December 31st, the date for submitting the financials, there was no closure to those above issues, to the issues I just discussed. The bottom line was that the financials were not available for submission to the Auditor General on December 31st. Recognizing that deadline was approaching, the week prior to December 31st, there were two conference calls with the Auditor General. The first call was with Director Strom, CFO Balducci from the School Department, the representatives of Markham, the Auditor General, and one other representative in his office. I was not in that discussion. But basically discussing the circumstances to request an extension from that 12/31 deadline. Subsequent to that, it was a couple of days later, there was also a similar conference call involving Councilman Stykos, Council President Lanny, myself, representatives of Markham, and the same people from the Auditor General's office stating their position and also reinforcing that request for continuation. Subsequent to that, the Auditor General understood it and had granted an extension, which was not just something to note. It was not just unusual for Cranston. Because of that major financial accounting standard change that I mentioned, many of the cities and towns had to respond to that. And it was a major, major reporting in the financials versus footnoting from prior years. So Cranston was not alone in requesting an extension. It was one with many of the more substantial communities. Fast forward to last week, as of, I believe it was Wednesday of last week, the audit of the charter schools was completed and the numbers submitted to the Finance Department, at which time the financial statements were compiled immediately after. The auditors have finalized their audit procedures and internal control procedures. And last Thursday evening, the Audit Committee, as Finance Director, Finance Chairman Stykos mentioned, did convene. And where Representative Markham showed up, they presented the results with a quorum. There was a thoughtful discussion, and there was a vote to recommend approval of the audited financial statements to the City Council. The vote was to approve the auditor's report and the audited financial statements. And just a notation that there was no discussion nor real comments concerning the management letter because at that time, that was the first time the members of that committee had visibility to that report. So there was really just no discussion. So basically, that approval did not include comment on the audit, on the management letter, nor the single audit of the federal programs, which is typical, they would not approve at this time. So that is where we stand as of this moment.
Counselor Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of questions through the chair, I guess to Mr. Moretti. So what you're telling us is that the Audit Committee couldn't get enough people to show up just before our council meeting in December, knowing that there was a deadline of December 31st. Is that what you were able to discover?
Yeah. There was, yes, past practice, they, I believe, all the members of the committee didn't change from the prior year, so they knew there wasn't a deadline of December 31st.
Correct.
And something to mention is actually Counselor Stykos actually put off an extra week, the Audit Committee, scheduled December Audit Committee meeting and related Finance Committee meeting to allow more time for the audit to be completed and for the Audit Committee to meet. And that still didn't work.
When was the audit prepared? Do you know what the date was that it was released?
Actually, it was just last Wednesday or Thursday.
No, I mean for the council meeting in December.
It was never really, there was a draft without completed financial statements. At the council meeting, there were no financial substance, no financial, key financial numbers because the charter school numbers were unavailable. And therefore, they were not able to present any substantial numbers.
Okay, so the charter school didn't have its act together, so the School Department didn't have its figures, and the Audit Committee didn't meet. They just canceled the meeting? Or they tried to have a meeting?
No, it was not a quorum.
Okay. So many of the members didn't show up to discuss what they were going to do, knowing that there was a deadline. Okay. And then the schools weren't prepared. And that's basically what you're saying.
And there was some, also additional time required because of that change in accounting standards.
There was a change in accounting standards. But, okay. So there's a lot of blame to go around when you talk about why it didn't happen. And the Audit Committee, I'd like to know who didn't show up for the Audit Committee. Some of them might have been on vacation.
For the record, I was on vacation and traveling for both Audit Committee meetings, so sadly, I could not attend.
Counselor Sam Maria.
Council President, may I ask the Order on, on Order question? Did the Auditor General okay the extension?
Yes.
He had no problem with the extension?
No, no problems.
Did he have any problems with the questions that we asked at the last meeting?
No, no real concerns. Just wanted to hear the explanation and thought it was fair.
I'm just guessing, since it's our audit, the council should have the right to ask any questions they want and not go through things too quickly. So I don't think there's no harm nor foul here. He approved the extension. So I don't know what the big to do was. I mean, we were asking valid questions. There were some statements in there that were a little bit alarming, and we got our answers. So I say we just vote on this. Thank you.
Asino.
Yeah, through the chair, Counselor Favecchio. Counselor, are you saying that the reason why we didn't go for it, that we were trying to find out blame for why it wasn't ready?
Well, I think there was some, if I may, Council President, there was some discussion about why it wasn't ready. And obviously, now we're finding out that there are a lot of reasons, many of which were the School Department's numbers were not in. The Audit Committee didn't meet to discuss, you know, possibly getting an extension. And then there was a big change, and the management letter was discussed at length during that meeting when management letter is not part of the actual audit. So it could have been passed without that. But I think the more important thing is the numbers that were missing, lacking at the time. So I'm not saying that there's anything wrong. I think that some people made a big issue out of it. I don't think, you know, the extension was needed and we did it.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you in that this council as a whole treats the taxpayers' money like it's their own checkbook. And we've done that year after year after year. Okay? So the fact of the matter that, you know, you can't reconcile the checkbook, plus we're paying for the audit as a council. This is the council's audit, not the administration's audit, the council's audit. For us to delay it until everything is perfect, everything is okay, I don't think that's blame at all. I think that's doing responsibility to the taxpayers. So I disagree with you on that point. Second point, Mr. Kimikas, the question to Counselor Stykos?
Go ahead.
How many members are there on that Audit Committee?
There are six members on the Audit Committee. Present at the meeting where we didn't have a quorum was me, Mark Parati, and Bob Bowdy. And absent were Counselor Farina, Sherry Fernand.
Well, I'm not asking that. My point-
Well, we might as well just get that out there. Sherry Fernandy and is it William Squizera?
William Squizera.
Have these people, are there habitual offenders? So going into next year's audit, when the time comes, I mean, I have an idea that maybe we start three days earlier. But besides that, if there are habitual offenders on that Audit Committee who can't make the meeting, then I would suggest that, you know, whether it's the administration's appointment or it's our appointment, whoever, that we replace that person. So again, we don't run into the same situation next year.
Yeah, that actually was, that problem was discussed by the Audit Committee. I have a proposed ordinance going in officially tonight, which would be heard next month, which would expand the committee to seven members and make the seventh member the Council Auditor. So that's a point that Finance Director Strom pointed out is this is a weird committee. It's got an even number of people, and we need four out of six. So that's one thing that will be done to avoid the same thing next year. And at the Audit Committee meeting that we did have, and that we did have a quorum last week, I stated to the accountant from Markham that we needed to know if the audit wasn't going to be ready, and we needed to know ahead of time. One of the things that came up in that discussion was that they didn't get in, quote, "get into the city" until October to start putting the audit together. And so they said for them to really get things done and get the audit in people's hands so they could look at it for a little while, they needed to get into City Hall in September. And Mike Igoe pointed out that one of the problems that the city has is that any tax receipts that come in in July and August, 60 days after the end of the fiscal year, have to be counted in the previous fiscal year. So they can't close the books until the beginning of September. And that delays things. So I think as long as that exists, we're probably going to have a problem this year. And Director Strom was quite upfront about this. He lost a key staff person, I don't know, for five months before the person could be replaced. And that delayed things. And then on top of that, there was the charter school problem where, guess what happened, was in the middle of the audit, the charter school's auditor, who's not our auditor, quit. So they had to go find someone new. So I think next year, hopefully, we'll have an Audit Committee that gets a quorum on a regular basis. And we'll hear from Markham, you know, gee, we didn't get in to City Hall until October for the following reasons. So it isn't going to be, you know, it's going to be rushed. Because the Audit Committee got, at the meeting where we didn't have a quorum, the Audit Committee received the audit electronically the afternoon before the meeting. So of course, no one had really looked at it. So that was another problem.
Mr. Strom, you can come in.
Yeah, I just want to comment on a couple of things. Regarding the audit being done sooner, as Controller Igoe stated, we have what they call the 60-day rule, which Counselor Stykos has already stated. And it takes, oh, I would say probably the first or second week of September before we really compile all our revenues for the fiscal year. In addition to that, though, I think the council should know that there's what they call an IBNR, which is incurred but not recorded claims in our healthcare system. That's another 60 days. Okay? So that would take us into September as well. And actually, I take that back. It's really a 90-day period. Because what it does is, people that have services provided to them in the months of April, May, and June, we, sometimes the claims themselves don't get processed to July, August, September. So until the end of September, we don't have our final cost for claims. That's another issue. The other point is that with Gatsby 68, Mr. Moretti stated, that's been a major change by the GFL and Gatsby. It's created more work, and our consultants, our actuaries have had to do more work. And also, our auditors had to also get information on the state level of the pensions on the state level that were in the MERS program for fire, police, city workers, education, teachers, et cetera. So I think this year is somewhat of anomaly why things got delayed in addition to the charter school. I would say going forward, now that it's been implemented, I would think next year, things should go smoother. But it's been traditional that the orders have never come in before the middle of October to do the audit here. And we were always on time, except for this particular year. And I feel confident we'll be back to that timeframe for next year.
Counselor Asino.
Director Strom, Counselor Stykos mentioned something about taxes and whatnot. I mean, by law and ordinance, right? If anybody pays their new taxes for the next year, we have to hold that into a restricted account and give it credits to the year that they do, correct?
That is correct. But what we're talking about are taxes for the old. When I say the old year, the fiscal year that just concluded. That's what you leave open for the 60 days.
Right. So what is the absolute cutoff date, or whatever we allow as a cutoff date? So if people don't pay their taxes by the end of the fiscal year, and then they decide to pay in December, where does that money go? Does that get credited to the old year?
August 30, through August 31st, it'll get credited to the old year. It pertains to the old year's taxes. I don't see it happening. But say someone pays in advance, it'll get credited to the proper year, which would be the current.
What I'm saying, if somebody overtaxes for 2015, the old year, and they didn't pay until December, when that revenue finally comes in, where does that get credited?
That'll get credited to 2015 as a prior year.
It'll still get credited to that year.
Yes.
So technically, we're not closing the books then yet? Or is there an account that says-
Oh, no. As of August 31st, yeah. As of August 31st, the books will be closed for taxes for that fiscal year. If you come in September, October, November to pay it, it'll show up as a prior year tax payment, but it'll go into the next revenue cycle.
And that's by state law and ordinance, right?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Claims Committee. Counselor Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. This is probably the slowest month we've had yet. Two claims settled. One for $3,083 to Mr. Sayeda, and one for Ryan Public Transit Authority for $1,025 for vehicle damage. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Election of city officials. Are there any election of city officials? Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearings. Any of the four members, the five members of the public elect to speak on anything, doctored or undocumented items?
doctored or undocumented items?
Valerie Shulley, 27 Farm Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. And first, I want to say shame on me for not speaking on this before this, because I saw the resolution about the tolls, and I thought, great, our city council is doing something for not only the taxpayers of Cranston, but for the taxpayers of all of Rhode Island. And to me, it was a no-brainer. It never, ever occurred to me that that would fail, ever. People are already trying to nip it in the bud, because the truckers aren't going to go through. Rhode Island is very easy to bypass. It's going to be a tax on us, it's going to hurt the businesses, and anybody here who does not believe for a second, once all of that happens, that your car isn't going to be told next, I have a bridge to sell you. So for those who supported it, thank you very much. For those who didn't, I'm very saddened and sorrowed by it. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public would like to speak on any item? Name and address to the record, please.
Richard Tomlin's 400 Farmington Avenue, to the benches behind me. I'm really as dismayed as a young man as I've ever been. I see a lot of cherry picking here. Somebody talks about how much it costs us to do a mile of road versus Massachusetts. Okay. We hear another one saying, well, we're the checkbook for the citizens, okay? Then the president gives us a lecture on how we ought to deal with money that's spent, and the citizens have to pay for it. As far as the roads is concerned, one answer might have been if you went to the speaker's fundraiser at the Marriott the other night and found out who come in. Find out who makes these donations. By and large, a lot comes from Carty. But if we're so concerned about that, and I agree, why don't we find out what our cost is to do our roads when they're agreed pay compared to other cities in the like area? Why don't we make an analysis of what other cities and towns pay for their fire departments in the state and outside of the state for local? And I still find, I haven't heard one word. If Mr. Smith was here, I think the next headline would be, "Financial Impact? Question, question, question." There's where you have your responsibility, and I hear nothing. Nothing. And as far as what you spend an awful lot of time on, like the handicap parking, which number 95, which I am, would probably make me eligible, but at the contract and purchasing, as Mr. Strom would know, we don't get into the things mostly that you discuss here, but I can assure you, we go into more detail on areas that don't even come close to what you do as far as the financial impact. Because we sit there, and we do it objectively. And there's so-called Democrat appointees and Republican appointees, but that never comes up, never. And I can't tell you how one member's going to vote on one item because he was appointed by the Republicans or the Democrats. So the point is pretty simple. We are not looking out for the city overall. Now, there's no way you're ever going to prove to the citizens of this state that you're doing your job when you don't do financial impacts. I do remember once when Aaron Garabedian was the president, to come down off of the podium and hand the gavel to whoever was the vice president, and took that contract and went through it item by item. And whether you agreed or disagreed with it, it gave you more information. I doubt seriously that any member, or I'll say, maybe, one or two, really went through that contract. There's, I went through it, there's a lot of little legalese in there. Our legal experts should tell us what that exposes us to or what it doesn't expose us to. Our auditors should tell us what it exposes the taxpayers to. That's the only way you can honestly approve something. It's just a shame, it's absolutely a shame, that this isn't being done at this point. And you've got the talent here, and it's not a question of being a Republican or being a Democrat. That shouldn't even enter the question. Anybody here, you all took the same oath. You didn't take a Democrat oath, you didn't take a Republican oath. You took an oath to protect this city in all ways that the charter calls for, and the responsibility you have. You can go over any contract, and you can make provisions or suggest it and send it back to the mayor. Because I heard some comments here, well, we just have to approve, basically is what you're saying. What a bunch of you know what that is. You sit in the chair, you offer nothing except how wonderful the contract is. And you don't compare it to any other contract to let the citizens know. And I hear from people, well, you're getting the best, you gotta pay for the best. That's so disingenuous, that's the best word I can use. I could think of some others that is. That means if we pay more, we'll get more. You tell me that if any one of the people, Mr. Strom is an example, didn't get a raise for four or five years, he wouldn't do his job. He'd kind of slurp a little bit, he wouldn't work the extra hours that he puts in. That's a bunch of bull, a professional. You know how many people would stand in line, there'd be firemen in this city, and do a good job, and do it for less? So that argument is so bogus, it's mind-boggling. And all I can say is, gentlemen, we better shape up and let the public know what your responsibility is, and then fulfill it. Thank you.
Point of information. Yes, go ahead, Councilman Farina.
My point of information is there was a three-year fiscal impact study that was reviewed by this body at the Finance Committee meeting. Our city auditor gave a presentation on the impacts of this contract. The Administration's Finance Director gave an impact study of this contract. The Finance Committee reviewed those impacts, asked several probing questions on what those impacts meant, and to assume that we did not do our due diligence with this contract is an insult to this council, which I will not stand for.
Everybody has a right to express their opinion, whether they're right or whether they're wrong. Name and address for the rec, oh, Councilman Sambaria?
Can I add the point of personal privilege? The last speaker that just sat down mentioned that we didn't ask for fiscal impact statement on the toll resolution. I think you need to pay more attention, because I made a motion to ask for fiscal impact statement, and I have like eight witnesses here who vetted it. So I asked for fiscal impact statement. I always ask for fiscal impact statement. So again, you're entitled to your opinion, but I think that was not factual, Mr. Tomlin. Thank you.
All right, I don't think we had a debate.
Oh, wait a minute, you just said you didn't hear it. Did you not hear what I just said?
Councilman Sambaria, end of discussion. We're not here to debate the public on their opinions. Mr. Tomlin has his own opinion, and he's welcome to it. We have our own opinions, we're welcome to it also. Our next speaker.
My name is Roland Kuti, 27 Lee Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. You know, we talk about the city being 41st best place to live. My question is, why do we have to build a house on every single open spot of land in this city without the environmental consequences? You ruined my neighborhood. My neighbors and I are so up in arms of what this mayor and what these people do, these, I call them Bob the Builder people, that come into this city, build a house anywhere on a floodplain, that's going to cause more environmental damage to our properties. They build these houses, sell them, run away, and don't even tell anybody. There's no city ordinance. I've talked with planning, they go, well, they really shouldn't build houses here, but we have no city ordinances or anything to protect the people in these properties. And I say to you, why do you have to put a house on every single lot without a say from the people in these neighborhoods? I look at that house on Cranston Street, and I go, just because there's a two-by-two piece of land does not mean a house has to be there. Do you need money in this city that badly? My neighborhood is ruins. My house has never been flooded until they started building houses where everyone looked the other way. Because of the previous people that ran this city, new people, and looked the other way. Those people are now dead, unfortunately, so I have no repercussions. None of my neighbors have any repercussions. But the house that's being built across the street from me had filled from who knows where, but nobody cares about it. They built up three feet, that house is going to flood. But they don't have any recompense to tell those people that until two years after their mortgage is due, when they get a little like I just saying, hey, you have to get flood insurance, whether you can afford it or not. I, I, I don't even know what word. I would please like somebody to have these people do an environmental impact study before they build a house on this property. I'd also like the neighbors in these older neighborhoods to say, hey, we don't want this here, because this is what's going to happen to our houses. We have no say, unless it's a Cumberland Farms or something like that. It doesn't matter until everyone around here goes, oh, how did that happen? It happened because you're all looking the other way. I don't care if it's a buildable lot. These older neighborhoods, these houses need to be a certain size, they have to fit in with the neighborhood, and a lot of them, they don't. That house is so big across the street from me, because it's on a floodplain, that they can just see in my window. My house is almost paid for, I'm not leaving. Can we please stop these Bob the Builder people? Because they come in, cause damage, and leave, and there's only people left with the consequences of those of us that live there. So please, somebody, stand up to these people. Just because they may be your friends, just because we need construction jobs, it's not right. You're ruining old neighborhoods for a buck. Please stop.
Any others in the public would like to speak on any item? My only comment on that is, DEM doesn't allow people to build on floodplains, if I'm not mistaken. So if it's a buildable lot, it can't be on a floodplain. So maybe the Administration could contact Public Works to see if there's any violations on this particular piece of property.
Mr. President, I'll be happy to get a specific address from Mr. Kuti and check with planning to see what approvals were obtained and what the requirements were.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anybody else would like to speak on any documented item?
Just so, just to my knowledge, before a house is built, I'm sure there's certain specifications and rules that would go before the zoning board, is that correct, Council President?
Yeah. If they're looking for a variance, it would have to go before the zoning board. But if there's no variance needed, it wouldn't go before the zoning board.
Because they would have more jurisdiction over buildable lots than we would, am I correct, the zoning board?
We really don't have to have much jurisdiction. The council doesn't have much.
We really don't.
It's really the zoning board, Public Works.
Planning, planning department. Yeah, that's not a hospice, much at all. Thank you.
Okay, election of city officials, moving on. Board of Contract and Purchases, Richard Del Sesto, filling the unexpired term of Colleen Crudell, for the term ending January 2nd, 2017. Is there a motion?
Do we have to, is it, Maria?
Do we need a motion?
Or just a move on the Board of Contract and Purchasing? Election or?
It's an appointment.
It's actually an appointment, filling the position, appointment by the Majority Leader, it doesn't need a vote.
Motion to approve?
It doesn't need a vote.
Doesn't need a vote, okay.
All right, I appoint him, fine.
I'm sorry, what? She resigned a couple of weeks ago, I believe. She took a job with the Senate, I believe.
Colleen Crudell resigned at the last BoCap meeting, which was a week ago tomorrow. So, what's tomorrow, 26th to 19th?
Our Report of City Officers, are there any reports from the city? No. Executive Communications, are there any reports from the Administration?
Yes, Mr. President, there's a report on hiring special counsel, consultants, et cetera, that was distributed to the council members earlier today, I believe, but I do have a copy in case anyone needs it.
Council President?
Yes.
At the time, I have a couple of questions on the monthly bills.
Okay.
I can go now?
No, I think Mr. Coop still has the floor.
Yeah, he does.
I do. Mr. President, I have several requests for the council. I have a request to be continued in service from Captain James Dauber of the Cranston Fire Department.
Mr. Council President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we just go back to that last point? Your hiring of special counsel, or is there a specific matter in your hiring this council for?
No. No, Councilman, that's the monthly report that goes out every month.
Through the chair?
Should I continue? Yes.
You made a reference to something having been distributed earlier today with regard to the hiring of the special counsel. I did not receive anything, I did not disseminate, oh, you, no, 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 I don't believe you're talking about the legal fees, are you?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Oh, you are talking about the legal fees.
Yes.
Ah, thank you.
Okay. So.
I'm waiting to talk to you.
Okay. Captain James Dauber, Cranston Fire Department, having reached the age of 63, but not yet 65, requests to be continued in service for one year. Administration's received documentation evidencing his eligibility and would recommend approval of that request.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Farina?
Yes.
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 Mr. President, Captain Timothy McGarty of the Cranston Fire Department, having reached his 56th birthday, but not yet his 65th birthday, requests to be continued in service for one year. We've received documentation evidencing his ability to continue in service and recommend approval. So. Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Farina?
Yes.
Seales?
Yes.
Farina?
Yes.
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 And finally, Deputy Chief Keith Newman of the Cranston Fire Department has requested to be placed on the pension roll, it's effective January 22nd, 2016. Deputy Chief Newman has been providing service to the Cranston Fire Department for approximately 32 years, and has met the requirements to be placed on the pension roll. So most approved, second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Farina?
Yes.
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 Let's get these down.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Council President, may I ask my?
Yes, go ahead.
Director Coop, Matthew Callahan, court-appointed counsel, S. Antonucci Leabor hearing, 50% of the bill, explanation on that, please? Or should I direct this to our solicitor?
Gilbok, Lano, still coming in. It's 250 hours. I B. Pro, Antonucci.
No, we're here. On page six, I'm sorry.
Solicitor Rossen will address that, Mr. President. Yeah, this was our share of, Judge Gibney ordered that the Leabor panel be appointed an attorney, so that's something we shared with the employee of Matthew Callahan, who ended up representing the Leabor Board.
All right, so who picked Matthew Callahan?
I think it was Judge Gibney, that was a neutral.
Okay.
So it's basically administrative cost.
Okay, don't leave.
I won't leave. And that's all.
Donahue Barrett and Singal, $400 an hour state pension lawsuit.
Yes, that's Attorney Dolan, and he's specifically charged with, well, defending the city, remember the people that opted out, right? He's actually representing us. He's actually representing, uh, us, Attorney William Dolan.
Here's my issue. We don't have anyone on there already that can handle this, we have to keep adding more, more attorneys on? That's,
Well, specifically the pension, you know, this is the state and the local pension litigation. That's something that the solicitor, we're not charged, I mean, there's probably a handful of attorneys that are handling that type of litigation. This is the litigation before Taff Carter. So Attorney Dolan.
So, in other words, everyone else, everyone else listed on here, it does not have the capability of, of handling this lawsuit. So we pay someone $400 an hour?
Unfortunately, that was the lowest rate we could get for that type of representation, correct? Most of them are about 150, 125, but that's specified litigation. But it's also defending, you know, tens and millions of dollars on potential pension issues. Remember, these are the people that have opted out.
All right, so the answer to that, my question is no.
Correct, that is their lowest rate that we could negotiate.
Mr. Augusta couldn't do it, Mr. Robinson couldn't do it. Roger Snow and Han, who charges us $360 an hour, couldn't do it. Or Darryl Everett, they can't, they can't do it.
Correct.
I guess it's option A, option A, and option A.
Well, that's, that, that is the only litigation he's handling. That's incredibly expensive exposure, to say the least. And that's actually pretty much his specialty.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
Any other questions for the Solicitor? Hearing none, we'll move on to Council President Communications. Well, earlier this evening when we were talking about the audit, Councilman Vivekio said, it's not a big deal. Or something to that effect.
You know, that's not,
And he's right. The only person in this city who made it a big deal was our mayor. When he attacked the city council, saying we're irresponsible, we're jeopardizing the bond rating, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Well, come to find out, we were correct. We did our due diligence, we did what we were elected to do, and we did a good job. The city didn't sink into oblivion. There was no collapse in the bond rates in the city. And the sun shined the next day. So before the mayor goes on tangents without checking things and knowing his facts, he should take a deep breath and count to 10. Enough on the mayor and his, and his ranting and raving. The other thing I want to mention is that, um, our internal audit of Mr. Moretti has just about finalized the state police report and how much it's cost the city of Cranston. I will be calling a special counsel meeting in the month of February for a presentation on this. There's only a few more items that Mr. Moretti has to gather to complete the report. And I hope the administration will do the very best they can to supply him with that information. I also received a call from, uh, the school committee man, Wall, this week. And he complained about Ambrose Street. It's off Cranston Street, it's in the 5th Ward. Councilman Papalakis's Ward. And he said, it's a very dangerous street because there's no sidewalks and kids use in that neighborhood, walk that street to go to Weston Hills. I took a ride, I looked at the street. There's a lot of signs saying slow, curb, that type of thing, but there's no sidewalk. I don't know if there's any money left from the school, Safety for Schools program that we, we had a few years back. But I wish the administration would take a look at that because I, after seeing it, I do agree with, uh, Mr. Wall, that it is dangerous for kids to be walking on that street. And a sidewalk, I believe, can be placed along one side of that street anyways. So that's for the administration to come back with some kind of report, I expect, at the next council meeting. Other than that, we'll move on. Our council member communications, Councilman Stykos.
Thank you. Uh, got a number of items there, first is a request on the, uh, status of the trail, walking trail, a permit, application to DEM.
Councilman, the, uh, application has been received. We're just awaiting review of the application and signatures on that to be sent to DEM.
So, you're, say that again, I didn't quite hear, you're waiting for a review of the?
Planning has the application.
Oh, planning. Okay, because it would be nice to get that moving, it's, yeah, there, there isn't, there, there shouldn't be much to review there because it was essentially okay and then the, the person we hired was gonna make a few minor changes. So, I'm hoping we can get that in because their, DEM is in the process of changing their regulations. And so if we get it in now, we get in under the old ones.
I will mention that.
Okay, thank you. The second item has to do with, uh, a complaint, uh, Art, and I can't remember his wife's name, Mr. Daphne, Daphne, he came to, um, a council meeting and spoke and Evan Kirshenbaum went, um, and talked with him and felt that he had some potentially legitimate complaints. Unfortunately, uh, Evan resigned. And, uh, then it was passed to Steve Marcella, who talked to the building inspector and came back and said, well, we looked at that and everything's okay. It's, maybe, Jeff, you could work your magic on this one. Uh, this, this gentleman filed four specific complaints with the building inspector in July. They're written.
I could save you some time, I have it.
Yep.
I'll reach out to the, the building inspector and see if I can,
Yeah, the building inspector is, oh, we, what, the problem is that we don't get beyond, oh yeah, we checked that out and there's nothing to it. So, he's gonna sue the city. This is another, um, it's another lawsuit in the making and he's gonna say that we do not fairly enforce the law. That we have laws on the books that he, as a property owner, has filed requiring permits on building alterations and which his neighbor has not filed. And I think the simplest one has to do with a roof vent. And he says that a roof vent was installed on his neighbor's house and she never applied for a permit. So to me, that one's simple because, number one, do you have to have a permit for a roof vent?
Could I, could I just interrupt?
Yep.
How about, like, reach out to you tomorrow, we could talk about this? Because if it's gonna get into anything legal, this may not be the venue to speak about that.
Well,
I mean, I'll, you know, I could reach out to you tomorrow, I'll be brought up,
All right, I will, I will talk to you, um, that, we'll try that. Uh, I just want, the gentleman deserves an answer, that's my line. And, um, that was the second item, and the third item, I did receive a report today from you about the electronic, uh, waste which the city is no longer collecting at the DPW facility. And just so everybody else knows, the reason for that is that the company that, uh, Mr. Barone told me is that the company that picked up the waste, which was collected at the Public Works, is no longer willing to do that. So, uh, you're off to Johnston if you have an old TV or some other collection.
Uh, Councilman Asito?
Yeah, can I follow up, uh, follow up on that, Council Stykos? Jeff, do you know if there's any plans to, uh, put that out to bid again, to see if somebody else will do it?
Not at this, not at this point, we don't know of any companies that do that.
I, I believe Wall has a company that takes their TVs. Perhaps I'll get the contact person for you?
Sure.
Give you a call tomorrow, we can work on that?
I can forward that to Public,
Because that's just a profit center for us, really, it doesn't cost us anything, correct?
That's correct.
So whatever the split is, all right, I'll call Wall and I'll, I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could just add, uh, I don't know if they'd be willing to do it on a regular basis, but Goodwill Industries has done that at the farmer's market where they, you know, they pay somebody to come down with a truck and, uh, we publicize it and people bring their stuff down and they drive off. So they might be willing to, to do it.
You mean to drop it off at the farmer's market?
No, no, they might be willing to do it at the Public Works.
I, I didn't mean that sarcastically, Councilman.
You see, I'm, I'm out of practice with your sense of humor because you haven't been there.
He missed, he missed a judge.
I missed him as well.
Uh, Council Majority Leader Aketto, maybe you have some questions?
Thank you, Council President, just two items, um. First, uh, through the President Chair, through, to the administration, just, just update me on the policy on violations for, for dumping of mattresses, furniture. I get toilet bowls, TVs, and when they're put out on the sidewalk, which is pickup night, whatever night that is, and of course, the waste manager doesn't pick them up, how long are they there before the city acts upon them? Do the city need to be called or do we have a patrol out in each ward? You know, marking that, you know, these problem sites that we need to address? And you have the floor now, Mr. Barone.
Thank you, Council. This, that is, that's addressed, as soon as we get notified, someone will call either the mayor's office or they, they will call Public Works and say that there's mattresses on Flatstone Street. That gets turned over to the Clean City Coordinator, who works out of the Public Works Department. So he goes out to the house and actually contacts the person who owns the house or lives in that house. If he's unable to contact him at that time, he leaves a note. He follows up within a week, he goes back out there, um, he writes letters to the owner. So it's, there's a lot of communication between Clean City and the owner. And we rectify it that way.
So, we don't take it upon ourselves to remove the object and then build the owner? We leave it up to the owner to remove that object?
Yes, there's no ordinance on the books that says we can, we can lean a property if we go and pick up a mattress. There's, there's no ordinance on the books that we can do that.
Well, see, this is, then this leads to the crest of my question. In my ward, we have a great deal of rental apartments and a great deal of transient individuals. So what happens is I have tenants that leases up, that they move to another city and they put their television or whatever on the side of the sidewalk. So, the administration policy will never addresses, if there is no homeowner, the homeowner is, is gone. I guess you'd have to deal with a landlord in that case?
That would be the homeowner, correct. Yeah, we can't, we can't deal with the tenant because probably nine out of 10 times, it's the tenant that left the mattress or the toilet there and they're gone. So you, it's the property owner's responsibility to get it cleaned up.
So wouldn't it be more expeditious for the city to just pick up the item instead of letting it stay there for two or three weeks while you're deliberating with the owner and then just bill the owner for, for the removal?
Sounds like a plan to me.
I think we need to, I think we need to draft something.
Legally, I don't think we can do that. There is, like I said, there's no ordinance on the books.
If we draft an ordinance?
I think it's a great idea because now we could send Highway out there tomorrow
Exactly.
and you put a lien on the property.
Exactly. All right, thank you, so we'll be drafting something in the future, thank you.
But just so you know, the, the process that's been in place for the last year and a half that we've had a Clean City Coordinator, we've seen a lot less, uh, debris around. It's been taken care of.
That's true, it's, it's been addressed. Next item, next item through the chair, to the administration. Um, I guess a few weeks back, uh, there was a, uh, a lawsuit he committed, stolen, stolen vehicles. I think four trucks were stolen. And, and I, as a council member, had to find out all the information from the news. Nothing, there was no memo, no, uh, communication between the administration to the Ward 3 Councilmen on what transpired. And I believe some of those trucks are stolen from the stadium area, maybe, perhaps, I'm, I'm just, that's the rec area where they, so basically tonight, I just like, you know, what transpired that evening? Uh, was there a lock on the gate? Was the, was the lock broken? What time was the ad committed? How did they start the trucks up? Um, is there a police patrol? When I was a State Park policeman, we had a list of areas that we would have to check. And we would mock them off, that we, this building's secure, this alarm is set, so on, so forth. Does the Cranston Police have it in their patrol log that they need to stop at these facilities where our city trucks are and just take a cursory look at what's going on? So these are all questions I have. Can you address them? I, I know I gave you,
I won't be able to address all of them. Um, I did reach out to the police department, there is an ongoing investigation. Uh, the trucks have been recovered. Uh, the plows have not, but like I said, there's an ongoing investigation.
So four plows are stolen? Four?
That, well, there were four trucks, so I would imagine there was four plows, yes.
They all had trucks.
Um, I could get you a full police report and that may answer those questions.
Well, I, I assume it was, it would happen at night. Two clients. Right, exactly.
There were four trucks, you said.
Oh, yeah, right, so four plows.
Two, two were at, at the stadium and two were,
Which is Ward 3.
And Parkview.
And that's Ward 1, Ward 1, right?
Yep.
Right, but basically, um, we, we just don't know what happened that night. So the reason why I'm asking these questions is hopefully we learn by our mistakes and this won't happen in the future again. That's why I'm, I'm asking, the questions I'm asking here this evening.
From what I,
So, yep, go ahead.
No, go ahead. From what I understand, um, patrols have been increased throughout those areas where our vehicles are parked?
Was there a lock secured, did they break the lock? That was my first question.
They,
Or they climbed over the fence?
They plowed right through the fence.
Okay.
With the plow.
Then my next question is how did they start the trucks up? If the trucks are locked?
Uh, they have to hotwire them.
They hotwired the trucks? All right, that's gonna take time, so they plowed through the fence, that, that's a major, I mean, someone's gonna notice that. And if they have to break in the trucks, you're also causing another, you know, situation, you might hear some noise or something. But I was just wondering, you send me a memo on, on what happened, I'd appreciate it.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if I could get a copy of the police report.
Okay, that's great, that's, thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Asito?
Director, welcome back.
Thank you, Councilman.
I, I guess, uh, Director Coop last week was gonna look into, there was like severe litter on Western Cranston, Burlingame Road, Hope Road, Late Night Road, Connecticut Avenue to that. I don't know what the policy and procedure, and obviously it's a moot point now because there's a few inches of snow on the ground. But, uh, after that snow clears, traditionally, I don't know if we send our highway crews there to address the problem, uh, if it's on private property, uh, do we, you know, some, give them a summons or whatnot? But it's just gotten really bad and I know this year, since we didn't have snow through the end of the year, it's probably worse than normal. So I don't know if you're aware, again, I can circle back with you and talk about this.
No, I have, um, I have an update for you. Um, unlike, uh, congested neighborhoods, Ward 3, where there's stuff out, we have a, an idea of where to go to look for that stuff. When stuff is dumped onto areas up in the western side of the city where there's just acres and acres of land, um, we just send Highway out and get it.
Okay.
Um, I did talk to the Colonel, they are gonna increase, um, police patrol in those areas.
Okay.
And there are also some other devices that they're thinking about. It's, uh, it's solar cameras, I guess. So they're, they're looking at that. So in, in areas like that, like Wellington Avenue is a big problem area. And what would happen is, um, I guess the camera would take a, a picture of a license plate or, right, so.
Okay. And I don't know if this is to you or to Director Coop. Um, I know there was an incident at the senior center, um, sometime in January. Um, I know we were kind of shocked and I don't know if people were happy or unhappy about the incident or what happened, but, uh, are we ever gonna get a, uh, report, even if it's an executive session, to find out the facts on what went on and what, why the, an executive session, to find out the facts and what went on and what, why the mayor did what he did? Director Coop.
Councilman, I assume you're referring to the resignation of the, of the executive director and we've said many times, it's a personnel issue, we're not going to comment on the.
Okay, well, I mean, if we have enough council people, you'll talk to us in executive session about it. I know at that point she'll be able to have her legal representative there also, but is that what it's going to take or?
I suppose, obviously if, if the council holds an executive session, certainly attend, but I don't, like I said, it's a personnel matter, it's not something that, really, it's, there's a privacy, there's an expectation of privacy that all of our employees have.
But it's a, wasn't it a personnel matter when we were asked to give advice and consent at super speed also? Wasn't that a personnel matter back then? So, or are you saying, you know, we can do our advice and consent as quick as we're asked to do, but we can't find out details and facts after the fact?
There's a, excuse me, I believe there's a specific requirement for the council to give advice and consent. I don't know of any requirement for the council to look into the resignation of a, of a department head.
Nice try, Councilman. Councilman, Majority Leader Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I might make this, help you make this a little easier, Jeff, since you, seems like you just left, so welcome back. But I had a discussion today, this is on the Capuano Street property, I had a discussion with, Solicitor Marcela called me to talk about it briefly. And we have made some progress. He actually received a phone call from a very large law firm representing Ocwen Financial, the bank involved that, that owns this property. I was absolutely floored. So he's, he tried to call them back, he said they, they didn't get back to him by late today, but he's hoping to speak to them tomorrow. One of the other things that came out of this is after a discussion I had with him last week, I did some research of my own and I found that some of the banks actually do register, do provide a registered agent for service within the state of Rhode Island, which could be really good news for the solicitor's office because I know that the building inspectors had a lot of trouble contacting anyone when you have a foreclosed property. So I think they might, Mr. Ross, and you might want to consider researching the Secretary of State's website first because you may find some of these agents who are, they're, these big companies that represent large banks and other corporations as far as when they get sued within a particular state. And there are a couple of them in Rhode Island, one of them is on Jefferson Boulevard, another one in East Providence. And they were involved in this one, so stay tuned, you know, we will, we should have something within the next couple of weeks with an approach to this. I know that Mr. Marcela's approach and Mr. Coop had discussed trying to get the bank to actually convey the property for $1 since their fines are so great right now that it's probably worth more than the property is worth. And there was a program, I guess, that Mr. Coop had discussed with some funds that could be used to buy it and rehab it or, you know, take care of the problem. So I'm hoping we have some answers very soon, but Mr. Marcela's been working on it.
Okay, to interject, the city clerk has reminded me that the General Assembly, House Bill 7007 would require that the bank, after foreclosure on any property, has to appoint a registered agent for that property. So this may resolve this problem very quickly.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Actually, the, the language in the bill, and I believe it's 7007, it's pending, it was introduced a couple of weeks ago in the House, the council may want to consider supporting that, but it requires that the agent for service be filed with the foreclosure, which would allow the city to refute, you know, they can't file a foreclosure without the agent. It's not just a separate filing, it has to be part of the foreclosure filing package.
You would have contact information for that agent.
Exactly, that's what the Assembly's trying to do.
Even if that fails though, the information, there is, there are some that already are doing it, so you may be able to find an agent where you can serve. And so now he was able to get service on this particular property and hopefully we'll have something in the future.
Okay. Council Vice President Santa Maria, you're on deck.
Thank you, Council President. Bridge Oak Park Avenue's already been answered, I'd like to take that off the docket. Would you like to get an update on the Prism Streetlight Program? Last we talked to the director, Mason, I haven't, we haven't gotten a status update from where we are on the list. And Mr. Filoski hasn't got an update either and Ken had said he was going to stay in contact with himself. Can we get an update?
We received a report on Friday from Public Works and it's being reviewed, it's got to be reviewed by the mayor and Director Coop along with Mr. Mason because there's numbers as far as costs and procedure.
Could we get Mr. Mason to come to the Public Works meeting and give us an update? Council President, is that possible?
Yes. City clerk, please notify Mr. Mason, we'd like to have him at the Public Works committee meeting.
I'll add it to the agenda with the chairman's approval and let Mr. Mason through Mr. Barone know.
Thank you. Eastview, Midvale and Woodridge Roads were dug up by the utilities back last summer. Matter of fact, Woodridge Road, Minority Leader and I had a slow burn because Woodridge Road was just paved two years ago and they just dig them up, dig them up, they, it's like Velcro when they see new roads and they just come in and dig it up. What's happening with Eastview, these roads are in horrendous shape, horrendous. Woodridge Road was in bad.
You're talking about the gas main?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which was done, I live right around the corner, they would have done it in the spring and the summer. Again, they're just running rampant through our streets, they're not putting them back to the condition they were in. We all know this, that this is not a.
In defense of National Grid, when there's a gas leak, then you got to address it.
This is not a gas leak, this is a project, it goes on for a mile or so.
Well, right, you can't stop in the middle of it though, that's, this is what I'm told. But anyway, this is all temporary paving?
I hope so.
Yes, it is. Permanent paving will be done in the spring. Woodridge will be curb to curb, it'll be curb to curb restoration. Eastview and Midvale will be trench only.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll. Address it again in the springtime, Director, take a look at it. A couple of things, Amnesty Day is coming up in March, a few people called me and said they didn't know anything about the September. Could we possibly put it in the, either the Herald or the Journal along with any Facebook pages? A lot of the elderly don't have Facebook, obviously, but they do read the paper.
We have, we have a mailing, we're just, we have it both in English and in Spanish.
That's in March.
It's going to be hitting, it's going to be hitting within the next couple of weeks with just, with proofreading the flyer.
Okay.
So it's going to be mailed out to probably 60,000 homes.
Excellent, thank you. Director Coop, going back to Councilman Aketo's question about the mattresses, my request to you last month was to get an idea of how much it would cost to get these cameras put up so I could see if Ken Filoski had any grant monies available. I've already talked to Ken. Can you, can you get Ken an amount of how much? I guess Providence is doing it and they're nailing people, they're putting, they're putting them even in neighborhoods where they're able to nail people getting their license plate. And I heard from what Ken, Grant Rider told me, they're not too, too expensive if we can kickstart areas like Parkview where they're dumping like crazy, his ward, I know Western Cranston, Burlingame Road, over by Kat and Zaro's, Old Park Avenue, that hill. So, and I have to give credit to Council President Lanny warned us that this was going to happen when we first did this. And sure enough, I hate to say you were right, but you were right. It's becoming the mattress capital of the world for bad reasons. So can we get an amount and see if Ken can work his magic and get us some, some monies?
I've been working on that. What I did was I emailed all the directors to figure out if they would need cameras on the buildings that they occupy, which would be like the Hamilton Building, the Senior Center. I reached out to the schools, I spoke with Paul Oshewski, I think his name is, he's head of security for the schools. They are in the process of fitting all their buildings with cameras and swipe cards. So he, he emailed me quotes of what he paid for one of his schools for the cameras. The police department is in the process of looking through those solar cameras and they'll be installed in heavy areas that we find people drop stuff. Now, these areas haven't changed, people were dropping mattresses when we were picking them up, so, but that, that is in the works.
Okay, I just think it's proactive, especially it probably would have helped when the plows got stolen if we had them on camera, but anyway. And my last thing is just a thank you to all the council people and everyone that held up a D-strong sign. Facebook is buzzing with people who liked it and what we did. And to Dorian Murray, we're praying for you, keep strong and hope for miracles. So thank you to everyone for doing that.
Okay, so any other council communications?
The boat trailers? They're in. But you can't install them now. We have, you know, 18 inches of frost and I don't see a line of people waiting to put their boats in the water. I have a special place in my heart for that ordinance.
Any other council communications? I'll make one final point. Thank you to let us know that since July of last year to January of this year, we accumulated $272,000 in legal fees. Mr. Murray, please take note of that, add it to your report. Also on the white goods, I'm kind of curious how much money we've spent picking up mattresses, hiring people to find out where the mattresses are compared to paying for a white goods program that worked in the past, but to save a few dollars, we eliminated it. And now we have, like Councilman Santa Maria said, there are mattresses, black springs, TVs, all over the city of Cranston. And there's really, and it takes two weeks, three weeks, a month, however it takes, however long it takes to solve the problem. This is called inefficiency. And I hate to say that it's a hallmark of this administration, it's probably a hallmark of most administrations, but let's see if we can do things better. Old business, is there any old business this evening?
There's none.
Introduction of new business.
Proposed ordinance 1-1601, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled zoning, a change of zone for 306 Sichewood Avenue filed by petitioner West Bay LLC to be referred to ordinance for hearing on February 11th. Proposed ordinance 1-1602, an amendment of Chapter 3.04 of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled fiscal provisions regarding the Audit Committee to be referred to finance for hearing on February 11th. Proposed ordinance 1-1603, an amendment of Title 15.04 of the Code of the City of Cranston titled building code for library impact fees to be referred to finance for hearing on February 11th. Proposed ordinance 1-1604, an amendment Title II of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled administration and personnel regarding minimum wages to be referred to finance for hearing on February 11th. The following claims to be referred to Claims Committee for hearing on February 1st, personal injury claims of Sayan Saikala from an alleged incident on September 22nd, 2015, and a claim from Arthur J. Delphineus from alleged incident on November 23rd, 2015. And that's all that I have.
All right, is there a motion to refer all business? For all manages, as read by the city clerk?
No.
So, second. A motion made in second, any discussion, hearing, none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk?
We've received notification from the state of Rhode Island regarding the availability of surplus land offer to which the city has first preemptive rights. If we wish to exercise them, we have until February 4th. If we, there's no interest, then nothing has to be done on that.
Okay. The next council, regular council meeting will be Monday, February the 22nd, 2016. There's a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. All right, Pat, take it in.